They get communities to commit, we need this much money, a fixed dollar amount. And the Water Resources Board aggregates those needs and they go out and do a bond issue based on their triple A credit rating. They can borrow cheaper than anybody else can. They borrow that money, then they turn around and loan you that money at the rate they borrowed at plus 20 basis points or two tenths of one percent. That's the program you used when we did the financing in 2024. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board has another one that is going to close this year. That's purely by accident that you will happen to come in and be in a situation where you need more money right when they were getting ready to do a financing. There are seven, sixteen other communities with, seventy with them.
Yeah.
It's going to be a very large financing and this would be a good opportunity to borrow money. It makes less sense than you asking the Water Board to go out just for you and do a bond issue and loan you funds, okay? Unfortunately, you've missed the Water Board's timeline to be part of this transaction. That was the subject of the meeting last week. We met with the Water Board and said, here's our situation. You've already loaned the money for the plant. It's came in over budget. We need some more money. Can you squeeze us in at the last minute? They basically said, if you can do two things. One, if you can get us your financials, okay, your audit and kind of draft form, not with an audit letter with it, but the numbers as prepared by your financial people. If you can get us that and if you can get us a loan application by today, we will consider your loan if you all decide to move forward with this this evening. Your financial advisor went ahead and has worked through the weekend, got the application submitted today. Your financial folks have gotten the financials put together. That's been submitted to the Water Board. So we checked that box. No obligation to move forward. It just, it was our only possibility of having this window open is to get that done. So that has been done. We can become, be part of this next program that the Water Board's going to finance, which again would close in December, which would work in this situation. What you have in front of you is the resolution that authorizes the financing. Again, it's not to receive $37 million, $170,000. We will ultimately close on the amount of money that we contemplate. One, that will be less than that. We anticipate right now that we need about $33 million, $700,000 going into this construction account. If your engineers are able to find some items that can come out or they can reduce the cost, as long as we pull those out before we do the financing, we can reduce the size of the financing. We don't want to borrow more money than we need, okay? But we've no, unless we get those deducts or alternates taken out, this is what it's going to cost. So this resolution beyond that authorizes the execution of the documents. The transaction is going to be secured by the same water, sewer and sales tax revenue that your other debt's been secured by. So this resolution basically authorizes, one, the application to the Water Board and two, the execution of all the documents associated with the transaction. So I will pause and please feel free to ask us any questions that you have.
How often does this Water Resource Board meet? And you know, what if we didn't take the action tonight? When would be the next time? Or is there a next time that we would be able to come before this Water Resource Board?
One, you would have to approve this tonight if you're part of the next transaction, okay? The one that's coming in December. There is not a schedule when the Water Board does these FAP bond issues. It's a function of when they have enough borrower interest that they can do a financing. I mean, at this financing amount, you could go out and justify. We've done smaller FAP bond issues than we're talking about here. The problem is, is that it's about a 90-day process. So your bids aren't going to still be good unless you take advantage of this opportunity.
Okay.
So.
Yes.
Effectively, you'd have to refund, you'd have to rebid the project would be our concern.
So we're looking about a 45% to 46% increase of what we thought was going to budget. Is that about right? Being $37 million, uh, a top of 80. It's not 50%, so somewhere around the 40s.
That's in ballpark.
Ballpark. So. So you understand my heartburn with this right now?
Absolutely.
And if we kind of had an idea that in 2023 and over the last two years that everybody's bid process was kind of off a little bit, why didn't we kind of start looking at kind of where we were going to be on this? Why did we wait till the 12th hour to start trying to, the 24th hour of the day to try to figure out when we, that this was going to happen to this? I mean, you said over the last two years, everybody's, over the last cities, that there's been some issues with it costing more than what we thought it was. We thought it was going to be 80. Now it's 120, 110?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just kind of figuring out how do we get off 36%? I mean, I know that they're saying tariffs. Is tariffs really 36% of what we, what we thought it was? Is there any line items that we can look at and kind of tell us how that's happening?
This, this is when your engineer gets to it.
Yeah.
I was getting ready to say.
Finances and engineering.
So no, tariffs do not equal 30% of the entire project costs.
Okay.
But they are 25% of several of the equipment components that we have to have for this. They are not in effect. They keep going back and forth. They have done that since January. But none of the vendors are going to carry that risk of is it actually going to happen or not? So I'm sure those costs are in there. Like Avery said, it is a very competitive market right now. We did have six vendors, bidders come out and we talked to all six of them. We invited more than that out and we were lucky to get the six. We honestly thought we'd have three numbers come in. One of them dropped out the next day and then the second one that I assumed was going to bid, they let us know the day before question cut off that they weren't, they were no longer interested. They had enough on their plate. They weren't going to chase this. So.
Did you say one of them took the Tishomingo job? Did you tell me that? Is that, did that come up on the board?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. I know there's a lot of them out there that are just, they're buried in work. Now, with cost, yes. Inflation has been astronomical over the last three years. I mean, look at your grocery bill that you pay for yourself. Construction industry is no different.
Sean, would you touch on the concrete prices? I feel like that was very significant.
Yes. So concrete keeps going up. It will continue to go up until we find a replacement for concrete. And we're probably not going to do that because we build everything out of it. So that price, three something?
Three seventy?
Yeah, $370 cubic yard. That is the highest we have ever seen concrete prices for anything and this whole job is concrete. So there are some admixtures in there. We are looking at to drop some cost out of it already. We've already talked. I think we can get a million knocked out. But the numbers that we're talking about is not 30. We're talking a few million dollars.
So let me ask, can I ask a question? I know that we're talking about putting this out for rebid, right? If that's a possibility. The consent order date, if we rebid, would we meet that consent order date? Because I think that is something that needs to be stated, right? So we will not.
The, the first consent order date is bids by December 1st.
Right.
And we've been running a couple of months ahead of that this whole time. We'd like to keep that momentum. So if we rebid, which we would go to November meeting, I'm assuming, to reject this.
Pushes that.
Yes, to try and get it back out on the street to advertise by December 1st.
And then, and then Councilor Cranford, the way the market is right now, we could possibly get a contractor that could bid it, that could not start right then.
Right.
And it could be put off. So fortunately, this contractor can start right now. That's one of the things we looked at.
You know, all five of you up there, it had been mentioned that surely you've heard this, rumblings of this and this and that. I'm quite sure that all of you, over the last two years, in particular this last year, have kind of been nervous about where this might go. You can't know for sure, but you've been nervous just from seeing things. And, and there's nothing you can do about it. You can't say, hey, we're going up 30% because you don't know that you are. And, but you can be nervous from what you've seen out in the field. But until you get bids, you don't know. So I, I know this has been coming on and I suspect particularly these two guys have been nervous nancies for quite a while. But you don't know till you know.
Yep. And they have been. So.
And I think everybody up there.
Yes, we all have. And like Avery said, we sat down over the summer because we knew we were above. And so we did take stuff out.
And to the fellows in the back, apparently this Muskogee issue is not unique. Apparently. And I'm talking to Nate.
Yeah, we've seen us, communities all across the state. I mean, it's just, as I say, it's hard to project how much inflation you need to build in over the course of a year. I mean, you can take a stab at it, but we've all been surprised by how much the number is and then throw in the impacts of tests that are as uncertain as about anything as you've ever seen out there.
And when did we, the engineer, when did we first come up with numbers? What year?
The original was in 22.
23.
23 was the first number. And, and since then, we have always tried to squeeze this project into that number.
But, um, but that number was probably a fairly good number until, wrong or right, Trump raised all the tariffs, which is a combined 25%. Some of them are 150. But so in fairness to us, just, just the 25% in tariffs alone is a, like you say, 30% of the project. I just wanted to understand the whole picture. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
So my, next part of my question is going to be paying this lovely little thing off. Where are we going to look for the money to pay this loan off? Are we going to ask for water rates to go up, our sewer rates to go up? Are we going to ask for our foundations to help pay for it? How are we going to do that? Because I really am not in favor of jacking our prices up any higher than we've already have to our community. I think, you know, if you look at it, we got a medical foundation, sorry Derek, and we've got a, the Skogee Foundation, if you add them together, they're almost $200 million. I think they should give us a little bit, if they give us a little bit of from both, we could take care of this and not ask our citizens to step up and foot the bill for this. I know that's not a popular deal, but I think that's the avenue that we need to take. And if they don't like it, well, but they need to give us some money. Because it doesn't need to be on, on our foundation, in our population.
So before you answer that question, you will probably be able to answer both of these questions at the same time. If we don't receive the loan, then what would our possibilities be? Because, I mean, you're applying.
So if you did not approve the loan tonight.
Okay.
Then, I mean, from a financing standpoint, this is, this is going to be your best option as far as financing. I mean, you could potentially look at some sort of a bank financing or bond issue financing, but you're going to be paying higher interest rates and it's the total payment on the same amount borrowed is going to be more. So this is the most efficient, cost affordable financing for you. If you choose not to, then you're pretty much in the situation from a timeline, you're not going to be able to accept the bid. You're going to have to put it out to rebid. You know, you, you might get the same cost back. You might get a higher cost.
If, if I understand what Councilor Cranford, part of what she was saying, I think, was what if we don't get the, the money? What if they don't give us the money?
If the Water Board doesn't?
Yeah.
Yes.
The Water Board will give you the money.
Okay. Well, that answers her question.
Assuming, assuming you all vote to approve this time.
Is there, is there a penalty if we get, I mean, we basically don't have a choice. We have to do this. We, we have to. We're forced to do this. If we get, if we get this loan and then say that, that one of those foundations, if we go to them, if we pay part of the loan, I mean, there's not a penalty, is there?
Well, there is. And you can't, you can't prepay the loan. But I will say this, this is, the purposes for which the Water Board loans money is very broad. It's basically for water, wastewater and drainage projects. The loan can't be prepaid for seven years, okay, generally. All right. If you ended up, if the foundation, as an example, said, we're going to give you $10 million, you'd have an extra $10 million. One, if they told you immediately, okay, in the next two weeks, we would borrow that much less. If they couldn't tell you that, we can afford to the financing. And to get, under that scenario, you have $10 million of extra funds. You could take those extra funds and use those for other water, wastewater and/or drainage projects, which I'm absolutely positive, you have projects that you can use that money on. So again, with the Water Board's consent, we could take some money that was going to go to the wastewater plant and use it for other authorized purposes.
But not to prepay the loans?
But not to prepay the loan.
My next question, probably, I hope my last one, but I have lots of notes here. If we don't do this and then we are fined because we missed that consent order date and you said $7,000 per day, going back out for a rebid process and going through this whole thing, what is the estimated timeframe of that? Because we would be charged $7,000 per day.
So let, let me clear that up, Councilor Cranford. The $7,000 a day is if the sewer plant isn't online and operating in April of '29.
Right. But if we're going back.
But if we change paths and we're not trying, it looks like we're not trying to get this done, the EQ can start putting fines on us anytime.
Okay.
For not following through with procedure. And they talked as much as $40,000 to $50,000 a day when we were talking about what if we decide we just don't want to build a plant?
Okay.
It could get very healthy.
Okay.
So.
Did you have something?
Go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
Just going to kind of go back to Dan's question. With the, with our sewer rates, if we put that on the citizens, they're already scheduled to go up another $7 and change next year. What are we looking at? Will that increase for next year or will that continue to go up X amount of dollars year after year consistently?
So.
Instead of getting to, after next year, it was supposed to bottom out and no, no more rate increases.
Kind of a short answer to the question is, this loan, once the debt service comes fully on, would be about another 1.9 million per year in additional debt service beyond what you already have. If you kind of divide that out among all the sewer counts you have, that works out to be about $4 per month per account. So that's kind of, you know, if you have to do a rate increase and you have to do a rate increase to generate a full 1.9 million, it's about $4 a month. I mean, there's obviously some options you could talk about. If there's supplemental funding or if the, the size of the loan can come down, that can impact that. But that's, that's probably the topping. From the Water Board's perspective, you meet their debt coverage tests already, contemplating, including this loan contemplated. So they're not requiring you to raise rates. You don't need to, I mean, like last time when we were looking at this, we had to look at the rate increase that needed to be put in place in order to support the loan long term. There's no requirement that you put a rate increase. Now, you could make decisions as council whether you wanted to raise all of it, raise some of it and absorb some of it within your budget. You have some options there. But the Water Board's not requiring you to put a rate increase in order to be able to approve this loan. So it's not on the agenda to consider tonight. Quite frankly, probably needed to spend some time evaluating that at the city level with, with your financial advisor, you know, kind of talking through what the best options are there. But that's a decision you can make down the road. And you would potentially have the ability. You don't, wouldn't have to, if you chose to increase it further, you wouldn't necessarily have to put that in place right away either. That could maybe be a, a subsequent year after, you know, maybe in 2027 or something like that. So you, you have some options there and you've got some time to really think about that decision before you make it.
But what we don't have any time left for is this.
Correct.
This is, like Shirley said, this is tonight. Okay.
So my understanding is, um, so we're asking for approval. Is that committing us if we do this? Okay. So, okay. Cause you kept saying approval. So that, that's, so approval is a commitment?
It's a commitment in the sense we're going to move forward to the Water Board. This dollar amount, unless in the next couple of weeks, we find that you can cut some more out of the project.
Right.
Or you got some money from the foundation, as an example. We, we, up to the point the Water Board goes out and sells their bonds, once they've sold their bonds, you're committed to take what you agreed to. This is the highest amount it would be.
Right.
If your engineers can come back and we, if they can cut a million dollars out, we borrow a million dollars less. But once, once they've sold the bonds, then we're.
How much, how much time is there between now and then if we approached those foundations? Before we.
Well, my, I think the foundations will really have a very, very low interest rate loan to pay back then to pay a lump sum. I mean, that's what they've always done in the past is they just taken over the debt service. But how much, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, how much time we have? We got two weeks basically before November 17.
I mean, I think the Water Board for planning purposes, when they're underwriting or starts to go out and market the money. The Water Board will approve this loan at their November 18 meeting. You got Thanksgiving the next week and then they'll actually sell the bonds the following week, Wednesday, December 3rd. So really, probably about the 18th or so of November, that's when we need to have a decision on how much do we actually need to put into the project.
We vote tonight, but we have that much time to decide how much we need to, based on the streaming is down.
Okay. And then any modifications? We're talking about modifications, but from my understanding, what you said is that we have to have approval from ODEQ before we could do any modifications?
So some of the things, like cutting the polymer out, wouldn't need that. But if we're going to change some kind of design or something that's more technical, yeah, we would need. But I think I'd lean on Sean, our engineer, to ensure that we're not changing anything that's ODEQ approved through the plan set.
Okay. And I'm anticipating, or I'm also just going to assume that risk mitigation was already placed in the bids. It's not going to come out like if we come in and then all of a sudden they're going to be like, oh, we're another 20% over, like this number's.
I, I think this is it. So we can, we're not looking at anything technical. As far as how the plant runs to treat your wastewater, we're not changing that. That is set. We've picked equipment. Operators are happy with it. The city's happy with it. We're going to move forward with that piece of it. But as far as admixtures in concrete, types of electrical cabinets that we're purchasing, things like that, that do not have any impact on the overall wastewater design, we're talking about those right now. We started having that conversation Wednesday of last week already. So.
I'm talking about change orders, 5% contingency.
Yeah, contingency.
Yes. So we would like to.
This one has, this number has 10 and they can go down.
Yes. I'd like it to go down.
We hope it could.
Yes. Yes. So the, the number that was read tonight has 10% in it. When I was talking to your financial advisor yesterday afternoon, I believe, we were talking about decreasing that to five, which is typical in construction. Mike and I, we'd love to carry 10% through this whole thing, but.
So 33 million, 700,000 that is estimated to kind of fully fund what we have right now, that includes a 5% contingency, 4.8 million, 4.9 million, something like that.
Costs are not going to go down.
No. No, they don't seem like they are right now.
I mean, even to go in right now to even, like at the bank, when people want to do things like just build a house right now, they're calling back in and saying, I've got to have more money. Because costs are going to do nothing but get worse. They're not going to get better.
Our hope is they go up more slowly.
Yes.
Yeah. And keep in mind contingencies are built in for unknowns. In a project like this, we're going to run into some unknowns. We've got to have some money to work with. We're not going to be able to come back and get more.
To do this. I mean, it's not like we're trying to decide whether to do it or not. Yeah. I mean, we have to do it.
And my question is not if we build it or not, or if we don't, we just have to build it. My deal is how are we going to pay for it? That's my biggest concern. And who's going to fit that bill? And that's where my concerns lie. I, I know we got to vote to build this thing. I know we got to vote for the loans. I just wanted some answers on how we're going to pay for it.
Well, I think that's for us to figure out.
We'll figure it out.
But I don't want to figure it out and it costs our population another $14 a month to do this. I know you said four, but figuring it out to affect, have a population that's impoverished, where our poverty rates are high here, may not feel too bad to you or me, but there's some people in this community that $4 a month is a big deal. And I hate to say it like that, but it is. And I know not having proper sewer is a big, big deal too. And water, and I'm just, I just wish I had that answer already, how it was going to get paid for tonight. It'd make a whole lot of.
Figure it out.
I think the answer is the worst case scenario, all right, to debt service, additional money, is $4 per month. And basically your sewer, you can't, otherwise, I mean, if you don't do that, you're taking money out of your transfer schedule. If that's, at about $4 a month, you can debt service this additional amount of money.
Thank you, everybody. Next, before we step back, we've got a citizen that would like to speak. Mr. Lowe, if you'd come up and just give us your name and you'll have five minutes.
Ryan Lowe, sounds like I may be a little late. Good evening, Mayor, council members and fellow citizens of Muskogee. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight regarding proposed funding for the wastewater treatment plant project. We all understand that investing in critical infrastructure like our wastewater system is vital for public health, environmental protection and the future growth of our city. This project is important. Nobody, no one disputes that. However, importance does not excuse the need for responsibility. When dealing with tens of millions of taxpayer dollars, it's essential that we make decisions, decisions rooted in transparency, competition and fiscal discipline. At this time, Muskogee has only one bidder for a project that was originally estimated between 70 and 80 million dollars. A project of this magnitude should attract multiple bids, allowing us to ensure the best value for our citizens. Having only one bidder raises legitimate questions. Why did other qualified firms not participate? Were the project specifications too narrow? Was the project, was the process rushed or restricted? Before we commit to any contract, these questions deserve clear and public answers. Now we're being asked to approve an additional $37 million loan on top of the original amount. That's not a minor adjustment. It, it's a substantial increase and it puts our community further in debt. We need to know what specifically caused these escalating costs and whether alternative funding options, grants or phased approaches have been explored. We not, we cannot continue to make irresponsible and reckless decisions with taxpayers' money. Every dollar borrowed today is a dollar that Muskogee residents will ultimately have to repay through higher utility bills, higher taxes or reduced funding for other essential services. These decisions directly affect families, seniors on fixed income and small businesses that already bear the cost of city spending. We all want progress, but progress must come with accountability. I respectfully urge the council to pause before approving any additional borrowing until these financial concerns are fully addressed. The bidding process is reviewed and the public can be confident that this project is being managed responsibly, responsibly. Let's ensure that Muskogee's future is built not just on good intentions, but on good stewardships of the people's money. Ladies and gentlemen, the MO for Muskogee and our leadership is to operate in crisis mode, as we're doing tonight. We just spent tens of thousands of dollars, you guys did, to market a CIP continuance to improve downtown. Add a new gymnasium at the Martin Luther King Center. Spend money on the library. Those are all good things. But here we are, just a few weeks later, telling the citizens of Muskogee, not only is your water and sewer bill going to go up next year as it was scheduled already, we're going to do it again. And we don't know how long that's going to take. You guys just admitted, you don't know how you're going to pay for it, but you'll figure it out. The citizens of Muskogee pay for that. And, you know, I'm trying, I try to remain calm, but this is a serious issue and at some point, you guys have to lead and be financially responsible because ultimately the citizens of Muskogee are on the hook. Why didn't we take care of this years ago? We don't maintain anything we have. If we can find the money to spend, if the foundation can pay $10 million to beautify five blocks downtown, then we can spend some money because evidently we're in an emergency here. We got, we flush our toilet, we got to make sure it works. We got, we flush our toilet, we got to make sure it works. We have $200 million sitting, and you're telling us that we have to borrow another 37 million, you went and got a loan before you even know how much this was going to cost. Now we're asking the citizens to pay for this for who knows how long. And I preached this, everybody thought I was negative. I, I preached this, and every, all you guys wanted all this, all this stuff that you wanted, these pet projects on that CIP. I said, we need to be focusing on infrastructure only. Road, sewer, water. And here we are again. Guys, it's time to start doing the right thing for these citizens, because eventually, they're going to start pushing back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, do we want to hop back to four, and are we finished up with it?
We need to.
No.
Mayor, we would, this agenda item is on the table, so we need to vote about it now, unless someone wants to put it off.
So we need to vote to approve the resolution, correct, Katrina?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, I understand. Thank you.
Mike, can you speak to any of the bullet points that Mr. Lowe has presented to us about the, why we only have one bid? And was there anything that we did wrong as far as in the process? I heard you guys say earlier that, you know, there's other ARPA projects, other cities that have, you know, taken these bidders. Is there anything that we could have done differently in this process to attract our, anything that we did to deter some of the, the bidders from not wanting to bid on this project?
So Deputy Mayor, to, to answer your question, I feel like we've done our due diligence. I feel like our engineering firm has done theirs. We did have a pre-bid conference. We did have six bidders at that meeting. We all left that meeting feeling good, like we were going to get some competitive bids. Unfortunately, the two larger companies in the area, I guess, made the other four decide not to bid. And then at the last minute, the other large one out of Arkansas decided to drop out, leaving only the Tulsa contractor, Crossman, to bid on it. I wish we would have got more bids, but I am comfortable knowing that the bid that Crossman presented was adequate. And we did have our engineer double-check that bid with the local pricing to make sure that that's bid adequately according to other sewer plants being built in the area. And I think Sean can get up and speak to that if he needed to, but he did check that. I think we did do, did do our due diligence on trying to make sure we had the adequate amount of money prior to going out for the loan with Alan and Nate and their financial group. I feel like we had an engineering report that had that amount in it that was appropriate for that day and time. Unfortunately, the inflation got it, and it did go up considerably high. But I feel like everything that we've done, we've done our due diligence. I don't like the situation we're in. I hate it. I hate it for staff, and I hate it for the community. But unfortunately, that's the times we're in, and that's what we're going to pay for for this plant. I am very confident in talking to one of our local contractors who's heavily involved in this project, who did tell me that if they had to rebid, their price was definitely going to go up. And because that's what things are doing now, they're trending up, and they're trending up quick. So I think if we go back out for another bid, we're going to get a worse bid. I think we're going to get in some timing issues with ODEQ. So I do feel it's appropriate to move forward with this, and then discuss how you're going to pay it back. And, and as Alan and Nate both stated, the worst-case scenario is a $4 impact to our citizens, which could be detained as, as far off as a couple of years. But I do think we've all done our due diligence that have been working on this project, and I will defend that.
And let, let me say this as well. As far as, you know, you're responsible, we're responsible for the upkeep of the water and sewer plant. It's outdated, but we couldn't, and am I safe in saying that the flood is really what got us to the point where we're at tonight?
When half of your plant is underwater, six feet underwater for a considerable amount of time, and all the electrical components in it are ruined, and then shortly after that, you go through a hard freeze that did almost the same thing to it, that's what damaged our plant. And then when we, when we went to Oklahoma City, the manager, Avery, myself, we all went up to Oklahoma City with our attorneys at the time to defend our position on that consent order, because we were trying to get that lesson. Of course, ODEQ didn't care if it was underwater, they, they wanted up in operation. But we felt like legitimately, that's what caused it. It was underwater for a long time, and then the freeze got it. Not to mention, it's antiquated and it's aged. It's, it's a 90, that's why I had Avery start out with going through some history for you, telling you how old that plant was. But the age of the plant, the conditions we went through, there's reasons why it's the way it is. And it does need to get rebuilt, and we know that, and so does ODEQ. And we felt like we were on a good path. Unfortunately, these bids just came in too high. And again, I'll defend that. I think we're, we've all done our due diligence, Vice Mayor. And if that answered your question, I hope it did. If not, whatever.
It did. It, it did. It's a tight position that, you know, we're, we're all in. And, you know, as councilpeople, it's a tight position that we're in tonight, but tonight we have to make a decision that we, we have to take some action. And none of us wants to be here, and none of us are saying, and it's not fair that this is appearing to be a move that we're going to do, and then later on down the line, raise the water increases on the citizens. That's not fair to this council, future councils to come. Any nine people that's sitting here today, elected or not elected, would have to make a decision like we happened to make tonight. And none of us wanted to be here, but here we are.
But here we are.
Was it insured?
Was it insured?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So what, is it not insured?
I think the whole question is that it's a drip system, and it was going to have to be changed out either way, because it's out of date.
And, and the city is self-insured, correct, Katrina?
It depends on what item it is.
So most, most of the components and the technical aspects of it are not. Structures are, but that's not what failed.
Right.
There was, there was that kind of went in to get it back to operational, but to change it all out, because the drip systems are basically antiquated, and they, and then that's what got ODQ involved.
I, I'll jump in real quick. So after that 2019 flood, we did receive FEMA funds, as Mr. Lowe was referencing. But those FEMA funds are not to get you to a point of having a brand-new plant. It's not this, it's not that. It's to replace what you can claim and the minimum of what you can claim. So as we went through those FEMA funds, we did repair the plant to the degree possible with the funding. We got it back running to the best of our ability. ODEQ did not see it that way. They did not see the flood as a disaster that we could mitigate using alternative means of funding. We were limited in our options with what we could do after our negotiations with ODEQ.
Again, I think, going back to you saying you did your due diligence, I think that a lot of components have taken place, right? And so we're, we're looking at this whole final project, but then walking out in steps, you did everything that you could possibly do. I agree with Derek that it, it is kind of misconstruing to say otherwise, but I get it. And it is, it is a tough brunt to bear, and we're going to have to make this decision tonight, and being fair to our citizens since it's out here, and it sounds as if we're doing this, saying they're going to, raise your raise, we're going to do these things. This was never the intent. And speaking to the CIP and saying those projects should not have been done, those library and all of those people, us as a city, giving to them so that they could receive their grants that they had applied for, was also something that we had to look at when we made those decisions. So it was not like we just decided, oh, we're not going to do something to do something else. The library needed us to do what we did as a city for them, so that they could continue with grant funding. Our minimal amount that we gave them to their grant project is minimal. And so to say that we did other pet projects, we did not. We helped the library and other entities to get what they needed by giving them a percentage of what they actually needed. So we did not, we did not fund our pet projects.
All the while, we were in an emergency and crisis that we didn't know about.
That we did not know about.
Well, let's, before we make a motion to vote on this, whatever, I want to reiterate my statement a while ago, and I'm still going to hold the foundation and any of our trusts to hold their feet to the fire on this, because this is what that money's meant to do. It is, we're, we're in an emergency here, then they need to step up and help us. I, I mean, that's what that money's for. If you want to talk about projects, this is one of them they need to step up and help us with. They may not like it, but I think it's, this is the, what that money was meant to do, is fix these problems. And if these people think that those boards and stuff say, well, that's not what we're going to do with it, then that's wrong. Because this is what our citizens and everything look at, and they keep telling us, well, there's going to be an emergency or something. Well, this is an emergency. Those foundations, those trusts, need to give us that money to help pay for this. I will vote yes for this tonight, but at the end of the day, those foundations, those foundations need to give us some money, whether it's the medical one or the Muskogee Foundation, or combine them both, they need to help us with this bill for our citizens. And that way, we don't have to worry about the $4, or the $14, the $7. We don't need to nickel-and-dime our citizens anymore. We've got the money, they need to step up and help us pay for it.
Mr. Hall, I'm inclined to agree with your train of thought. Will, I know that Will, I'll, I'll do all I can do with you to see that we can head that direction. I want to remind this council tonight, I didn't know it was going to go this way, or things you never know, but, and the audience, this council tries to do their very best to do what's right for the citizens of Muskogee. And I'm proud of the council, and just remind everybody that statement. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item number six.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
No.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Now, do we need to go back to four?
Yes, sir, Mayor. If we can go back to items four and five, please.
Okay. Item...
Item four has been read.
Did you have any other comments on item relating to item four?
No.
And there was, I don't think there was any action to be taken, or?
We do need to either, to authorize the chairman of the Muskogee Municipal Authority to execute professional services agreement with MFSOK and the Muskogee Municipal Authority.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
No.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number five, please.
Consider approval to authorize the chairman to execute an agreement for bond council services between the Muskogee Municipal Authority, a public trust, and the Public Finance Law Group, PLLC, for services related to the Series 2025 promissory note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for a loan or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
So again, this is Nate and Alan, this is to approve the agreement with them, and we'd recommend approval.
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
No.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
We've got a long way to go.
Yes.
Long way to go. Two more, Jim.
Oh, my gosh. That, can you handle these?
All right, man, you got to stick it out with me. You got to stick it out with me.
Next, we'll have the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, October 27, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
Okay, we're going to strike item number one. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for the period of June 14, 2025, through October 17, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The claims for the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority from June through October 2025 are attached to the emergency questions.
Let me make a motion for approval.
Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Okay, we're now going to call to order the Muskogee City Council, October 27, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes.
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second on the minutes. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Consent agenda has items number one through seven. Does anybody want to revisit any of those items?
Most approved consent agenda has presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Okay, going to the regular agenda. Item A, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of the preliminary plat for Race Track Hancock Street subdivision located at 2300 South 32nd Street, consisting of 18.205 acres, or take other necessary action.
Okay, we will now open a public hearing. Mr. Brent Roberts.
Good evening, council, and good evening, mayor, deputy mayor. The application was submitted by Race Track Incorporated and indicated the property is being platted in preparation for a new gas station to be placed on the property. The preliminary plat went to subdivision review committee on September 17th, 2025, and was approved. In addition, the planning commission also reviewed the preliminary plat in the 10-7-25 meeting and recommended approval to city council. The preliminary plat complies with the requirements of the subdivision regulations, and our recommendations is approval of the preliminary plat.
Move for approval.
Second.
Yeah, we will, we'll now close the public hearing, and no discussion, I guess.
Thank you, Council Stouts. Move for approval.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Thank you. Item number nine, please.
Item passes.
Item passes. Number nine, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of Resolution Number 3053, Future Land Use Amendment, for the property located at 2300 South 32nd Street, City of Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
Okay, we will now open a public hearing. Mr. Roberts, again.
Yes, sir. The applicant has requested a rezone of the property located at 2300 South 32nd Street from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 General Commercial. The proposed use of the property will be for a new gas station to replace the existing gas station in Carl Wash. The request does not currently conform to the Muskogee Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Plan, which is why we also requested the land use map amendment.
Okay, it looks like no others have signed up. Uh, we will now close the public hearing.
Move for approval. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 10, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance Number 4276A, a request to rezone the property located at 2300 South 32nd Street, City of Muskogee, from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Robert, oh, we're going to now open a public hearing. Mr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. So, the applicant has requested a rezone of the property located at 2300 South 32nd Street, um, from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 General Commercial. Staff recommendations is, um, we recommend to approve the ordinance of 4276-A as a rezone request.
Okay, with no one signed up to speak, we will now close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number 11, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3056, giving notice to the Secretary of the Muskogee County Election Board, and calling a city general election for Tuesday, February 10th, 2026, and a runoff election in the event respective candidates for the offices of mayor and council members do not receive a majority vote, with said runoff election to be held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2026, establishing filing, withdrawal, and contest period, closing the 45th and 61st voting precincts, and establishing all the same pursuant to the Charter of the City of Muskogee and the revised state election laws, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you, mayor. This Resolution Number 3056 is the official document required to give notice to the Secretary of the Muskogee County Election Board and to call for a general election. This is for city council, Ward 1, we have a two-year unexpired term and a four-year term. Ward 2, we have a four-year term open, that will be open. In Ward 3, we have a four-year term. Ward 4, we have a four-year term, and for mayor, we have a two-year term. This election is going to be scheduled for February the 10th, 2026, with a runoff April 14th of 2026. I would like to point out that each one of our dates, as far as filing notice, candidacy, contest, and withdrawals has been extended by one day, past what the charter calls for due to Veterans Day holiday on Tuesday, November the 11th, and happy to answer any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, also, it's closing precincts 45 and 61 because we have no registered voters in those precincts.
What was that date you said, due to Veterans Day?
Due to Veterans Day, we have, normally, we have our, like, our candidates can file on the, on Monday, um, November?
It's the 10th through the 13th is normally, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We have a Tuesday holiday, so we have extended everything by one day.
To Thursday.
So, where are those dates?
The 10th, the 12th, and the 13th are the filing period, 8 to 5, in the office of the city clerk.
And mention of the 14th, don't we? 14 withdrawal. Yes, then the attached resolution, um, it also sets out all the hours and the dates. And then candidacy withdrawal has to be done by Monday, November 17th, by 5:00 p.m., which is also extended one day due to Veterans holiday. Any contest for the, against the candidates has been extended to November 18th at 5:00 p.m., and again, that's one-day extension passed, uh, past what the charter calls for due to the Veterans Day holiday.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number 12, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3062, a resolution of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, approving action taken by the Muskogee Municipal Authority, authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of a promissory note of the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract as amended by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the leasing of the City of Muskogee water and sanitary sewer systems to the authority, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement pertaining to certain sales tax revenue as security for the note, and containing other provisions related thereto, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, mayor and council, this is the same as item six in the Muskogee Municipal Authority meeting. Uh, we can go back through it, our staff does recommend approval, it's a council's decision.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
No.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number 13, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3059, a resolution in support of incorporating the Muskogee Industrial Park into Port Muskogee South, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you. This is an item that's being put on behalf of the Port of Muskogee. They would like to, instead of having so many of these different separate names for separate areas, they would like to incorporate parts of the park under one name, which is Port Muskogee South. It's simply branding on their part for advertising and to have a unified industrial park area. Um, it doesn't change anything as far as zoning, fees, or any rules or regulations. It's, it's like a Cracker Barrel changed their name, or changed their logo, it's the same type of thing. It's a name change for branding purposes.
That didn't go over well for a Cracker Barrel.
Yeah, this will go over better.
That's why.
That was my favorite example.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Number 14, please.
Consider approval of a resolu, of Resolution Number 3058, and a citizens' participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery 2022 grant relating to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant Program, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is a item that I take a little bit of pleasure in presenting to you tonight. It's a block grant, community development block grant, disaster recovery. And what this particular one here is going to do is address the flooding in the meadows, and this is going to help us hire an engineer to design a plan to come up with a solution to it. Now, this is not to actually do the engineering work or any contracting, but to, to develop and design an engineered plan to come up with a solution for the flooding in the meadows. And to get to there, we have to do, we have to adopt their, um, citizens' participation plan. This is an Oklahoma Department of Commerce, a plan that we just pretty much copied, so I do recommend approval. And before that, I would really like to thank Katrina, our city attorney, for her assistance on these next four items, because she basically did them while she was going down the road with me. So, thank you very much. But do recommend approval.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number 15, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3060, to submit an application to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for the CDBG-DR 2022 grant, a grant for the disaster recovery from the May 2022 flooding, for a voluntary housing buyout project addressing properties in the Meadows subdivision, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
So, this is to actually buy some houses out in the meadows. They've got two, in this, in this grant, they've got, uh, there are two separate funds. One of them is for up to $600,000, which is what we're going to apply for, for the engineering portion of this. And the other, they've got $3.4 million to do actual housing buyouts. This is a voluntary program, and all we're asking for tonight is, uh, the approval to submit the application so that we can get in line for it. Then we'll have to do some legwork to see what we could do to get some of the houses that flooded in that 2020 flood. Uh, this, again, this is up to $3.4 million, and, uh, we'll do our due diligence to try and get that taken care of, but I do recommend approval, and I'll answer any questions.
How many of these houses been annexed? When do we annex this?
So, I, and, uh, Councilor Hall, I think it goes back to 86, but I'm not sure. That, for some reason, that date.
That sounds about right.
Seems about right. It's, I know it, uh, has been quite some time, and, uh, hopefully, we can get something going to approve these last 20, 24 houses that flooded out there to, to get them out of the floodway.
That'd be great.
Did we know it flooded before they annexed all that in?
So, you're going back to 86 to ask me a question? I really don't remember.
You were here then, Mike.
I was here, believe it or not, but I was. But, uh, I don't know that it actually flooded back then, but I do know that it was built in the county.
I think it did, I was doing loans back then, yes, it did.
I'm sure Mike thought about, against the annexation.
If I could, I would have.
Uh, we had a motion and approval?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Uh, number 16.
Consider approval to adopt a citizen participation plan for the city's application to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for the CDBG-DR 2022 grant, a grant for disaster recovery from the May 2022 flood, for a planning project for the, for a subdivision drainage plan for the Meadows subdivision, or take other necessary action.
So, this goes with the item that we just approved previously. I will, uh, tell you that this grant is for up to $600,000, and one of the best things about it is it's a no-match grant, so we don't have to come up with match money. Although, it does make our application look better if we do kick money into it. And I did talk with the manager and with Dennis Reed, our treasurer, and they both said that we do have some CBDG funding available, where, as we could probably put $10,000 toward each one of these applications, which will give us some points on our application, which makes it look better.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have, we need a second.
Second.
Oh, second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 17, please.
Consider approval to adopt a citizen participation plan for the city's application to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for the CDBG-DR 2022 grant, a grant for disaster recovery from the May 2022 flood, for a voluntary housing buyout project addressing properties in the Meadows subdivision, or take other necessary action.
So, Mayor and Council, again, this is just still more of the meadows. Still, this is actually approving for the application to start the process for the housing buyout. That is voluntary. I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So, if anybody's asked, they don't have to give their houses up. This is voluntary. And I don't know all the rest of the parameters around that. Then we will get to those as we do the application process, and we'll inform Council better. But really think this is a good project.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 18, please.
Consider approval to authorize the mayor to execute a corrective deed for the property located in Muskogee original town site, South 50, Lot 1, Lot 405, to the record owners to clear title due to a clerical error in the Muskogee County land records, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This circumstance was, there are times that the city can go ahead and request that deed, that property in the city be deeded over to us from the Muskogee County Assessor's Office. For instance, if it doesn't sell at tax resale, or there's some other kind of circumstance, we issue a letter to the Muskogee County Assessor saying, will you please deed this property to us? And that's one of the ways that we acquire property. There's no cost to us. They recently hired a new person to go through and research all the deeds that have been done, and they found out that the deed that was issued to the city in 2015 was not thoroughly researched on that property. So, there was another deed that conveyed that property prior to them conveying it to the city. So, we are actually clouding the title of the legal owners, which are Abel and Marcella Diaz. They own that property. They have owned that property. Muskogee County Assessor's Office found that missing deed that was not researched before, sent us a letter and asked us to please deed that back to the record owners, because we, they should have never transferred the property to the city.
Right.
And we may have more of these coming up as they research the land records and all the transactions.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 19, please.
Consider approval for the Muskogee Police Department to accept the Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act grant from the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services in the amount of $200,000, or take other necessary action.
Chief.
Mayor and Council, this is pretty exciting for the police department. It allows us, it's a two-year grant, $100,000 a year, to allow us to continue with our peer support, as well as health and mental well, uh, mental health and wellness programs. Put the police on fire.
Fantastic. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Thank you, Chief.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 20, please.
Consider approval of the appointment of Cody Moore to the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve a three-year term, filling the expiring term of Delby Walker, beginning October 1, 2025, and ending on September 30, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Councilor Brawley.
Yes, this is my appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Moore has been active in city going on, so to speak, and wants to become more and more active with us and with the city, learn all what goes on here. So, I recommend his appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. He'll be a great asset to our community.
Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Excuse me. Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Good, good choice, Mr. Brawley. Item passes. Number 21.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in an open session.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. We're now in executive session.